Keith says rock and roll.
All right, we are live.
I'm curious how many people will be here tonight.
We should have taken, we should have taken bets.
I know.
I'm saying 250 plus. That's me over under.
I'm going 450.
Everybody's here to welcome Mr. Klein back on the board. Hey.
It looks like they're slowing down coming in now or about 212 right now. If you want to wait a few, a minute or two, but it looks like they kind of stopped at this point.
Yeah, we can wait a minute or two, a minute.
Probably got to throw everybody off starting on mostly on time.
Yeah, we're not half an hour late like we were the other meeting.
That was so bad.
When we blew our limit, didn't know it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Hey, you know, you're not born with it. It's good to learn dynamically.
True, true.
Looks stable.
Should we go on? Go ahead then move on?
Yeah.
Somebody already raised their hand. We haven't even started the meeting.
They're saying hi.
Hi. All right, I'm going to call this meeting to order. Thank you all for joining us this evening. We are going to start the meeting off with our flag salute. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag. Which is ten.
All right, Anita, let's do a roll call.
Mr. Klein.
Here.
Mr. Jackson.
Here.
Mr. Kern.
Here.
Mr. McCucci.
Here.
Mr. Akmanowicz.
Here.
Ms. Weed.
She will be joining us shortly.
Mr. Reimers.
Here.
Mr. Spear.
Here.
And Mrs. Mitchell.
Here. Okay, this meeting is being recorded by the Board Secretary and I do want to let the public know that we did conduct an executive session regarding litigation contractual and personnel matter prior to this meeting. Next item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes. I'll need a motion.
So moved.
A second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye. Is there anyone opposed? Okay, the motion carries unanimously. We're going to move on to our general public comment. Believe Terry, you're going to be reading those.
Yes, okay. First public comment is from Linda Polinos from Milford Township and she's in regards to returning safely to school. Now that studies are showing that not all face coverings are effective such as gator style face coverings and bandanas. Will more specific face mask coverings requirements be given before school starts? These studies have shown that wearing a single layer gator or even doubling it into layers or a bandana is basically equivalent to wearing nothing. I had initially purchased some of these because I thought they would be easier for my children to manage and wear, but now I've purchased two layer masks instead. Just want to make sure that since we are all in this together that we are all on the same page.
May I ask what's a gator?
The thing that comes up. It's like a mask that comes up.
The from the neck. Yeah.
We have mentioned that we were going to have approved, we were only going to allow approved masks. How exactly is that going to be determined and will we have a list or some way to tell what kind of masks are approved or not?
I would point out that those masks that I think they're referring to, they're really thin materials like the stuff those Under Armour shirts are made out of. So they're meant to breathe and I think that that's the real part of the concern.
But Dr. Harner or Nancy Anne, will we have any kind of guidance on what will be approved and what will not?
Hello. Yeah, I was waiting to see if Dr. Harner wanted to speak and I can't see everybody at once.
Well, I was, I was hoping that we'd read the comments and not be answering questions so we can get through the comments and then have that discussion later on during superintendent's report.
Works for me. Go ahead, Terry.
Public comment is from Deborah Messner from Milford Township. It's in regards to virtual teachers. Why can't you offer virtual teachers for the 100% virtual students that want to have a schedule? I feel like just because I picked virtual, we don't count. My children have the right to have a teacher just like other students. Next is a comment is from Chris Stout from Milford Township. Why is it necessary to require students who play school sports to attend virtually when there are students who play club sports that will be attending in-person classes? What is the difference when they play the same type of sport with the same level of exposure? And the next comment is also from Chris Stout. Why was the high school start time changed to eight AM? And why did we go to block? Was it considered that both of these changes would interfere with the tech school schedule?
Terry, I can't hear you.
No?
I don't know if anyone else is having trouble.
Yeah, I am too.
Yeah.
You're very soft, Terry.
It's like the microphone's far away.
It's right here. Let me see if I. Is that any better?
A different kind of different. I wouldn't say better, like.
Try the next one and then we'll see. I may have to switch to a different computer. The next comment is from Ronaldo West from Milford Township. We have two children going into ninth grade. Why can't we have both of them on the same schedule? Right now we have one doing virtual and the other has not received their schedule due to tech school has not sent them out. Plus all virtual was not an option for us. Is that any better?
That was for me.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, next comment is from Kimberly Konzik from Richland Township in regards to school supplies. Hello, I was wondering if we will receive a school supplies list to know what we are sending our children with on the first day. I have checked the website and been unsuccessful in finding one. Thank you. Lori Don Rossky from Haycock Township. I am wondering what will happen when the first positive case occurs in school regardless of whether there are symptoms or not? Is the plan to shut everything down, quarantine that student and everyone else he and she, he or she has come in contact with? This is not realistic or necessary, but want to see what the actual plan is. Also, since Governor Wolf and Secretary Levine have now repeatedly said that they only offer guidelines and recommendations, not orders or mandates. Does this change anything in respect to the tyrannial enforcement of masks for students all day? If their desks are four to six feet apart and social distancing ineffective and controlling the spread, why are masks needed while they are sitting at their desk? This will not only cause more problems with the student's health and mental well-being, not only convention, cause issues with their ability to concentrate. Next comment Diane Fessy from Milford Township. Hi, my student was originally signed up to go to tech school five days a week per my conversation with the Upper Bucks Tech. Now it's only four days and for the high school two days in and the rest is online. I don't believe this will be enough time at tech, especially if they have no prior experience in the subject they are enrolled in. Because they need more time to repeat the tasks several, lots of times to get it right. I understand the situation, but I don't see why the kids going to tech cannot do five live days, live half days and the fifth half day at the high school virtually. Why the elimination since they are already lost, have lost lots of time from last year? Thank you. And there's two more public comments so far. The next one is Eileen Tate Acker from Milford Township. As per page 12 of the QCSD Parents FAQ, you state it is not possible to clean rooms or desks between class switches. Teachers will be provided cleaning supplies, but there's no equipment or requirement for the teacher to wipe or clean desks or other materials. The district has hired additional janitorial staff to clean high traffic areas. How would the cleaning of desk surfaces be handled between switches then? If they are not cleaned, it goes counter to the health and safety plan of sanitizing potentially contaminated areas that have been occupied for a period of time by potentially infected students. Will students have access to second cleaning supplies to clean their desks themselves then, or must we send in products and supplies from home? Thank you. Stacy Moses from Richland Township. Our family chose virtual for three of our children. Each time the FAQ is updated, I review hoping to see more details on what virtual will look like. With this week's most recent update, the FAQ still only discusses possible live options. This is incredibly disappointing. After having nearly six months to play in for a virtual environment, why are these children not being offered dedicated virtual teachers? Live streaming has been discussed, but seems like a huge burden to teachers and virtual students still have no opportunity to engage. Those of us that selected to stay with the QCSD had other options for cyber schools, but we ultimately chose to stay with our community. Our students deserve guaranteed not possible instruction from teachers throughout the day. Anything less is simply homeschooling. The burden of education falls to the parents while QCSD still receives funding. There is one more. Public comment that just came in. This is from Amy Einoff from Milford Township and Amy said, my concerns are sports. I understand the requirement for athletes to be virtual has been removed. I asked the board to understand that athletics are key to our kids' mental and physical health. Exercise is a great stress reliever. The need for activity is clear, especially with hours of screens. Please support them. Clarity on the hybrid model. It seems like kids will be getting instruction while in school and the three days at home are unclear. Are they getting new instruction while virtual or are they supposed to be self-teaching while at home or just doing assignments? I have a junior in five AP classes and the lack of live instruction last year impacted his AP test score negatively. How do we avoid missing content? And last, how do we get back to a five-day model? It was said we have enough space if kids are at the three to four distance acceptable based on Dr. Demasker slash the CDC. Ms. Mitchell posted recently saying we have zero active cases in our district. So what will it take to get back to five days live? And that's the end of the public comment for right now.
Okay. Now I know that the next item that's on the agenda is for the superintendent report. However, I do want to make a motion that we move this up to the top of the agenda. Where's the help? Where's the athletic self-health and safety plan? I'm trying to look here.
I don't think you need to make a motion. You can just do it as the.
Oh, I can? But don't I have to motion to take it out of all the rest?
Yeah, you would have to take it out of the policy and programs consent.
I think so, Kalen, to be safe.
Okay.
If you want, if you want to vote on it right away, yeah, but I thought you just wanted to discuss it first.
No, I want to vote on it. I know that there's a lot of people that are tuning in and anxious to hear about that. So I'd like to go ahead and vote on it. Which item is it? Why can't I find it?
11A.
Oh, my goodness. See, I didn't see the competition for it. Okay, so I would like to motion that we remove 11A from that portion of the agenda to be voted on.
I'll second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries unanimously. So let's, let's do it. So I will need a motion for the PIAA voted to move forward with fall sports. So we'll need our return to competition phase for athletic health and safety plan. So we can start on 8/31/2020. So I'll need a motion to approve that plan as presented.
A motion.
Second, John Kern.
All right, discussion.
This is edited, right? Like from what we had addressed prior?
It is, and I'm glad that you pointed that out. So initially, we were going to require students who are in moderate to high contact sports to attend fully virtual. And after consideration from the board, we decided to remove that.
So on the, on the, I have a couple of things. On the waiver liability, the third, third dot down people, I think it's supposed to be who are immune compromised? Just a typo that I picked up.
Yeah.
So I do have one question about it and that's regarding spectators. So where, where was it in here? I read that there will be no spectators. Is that correct?
Yeah, current, I believe currently the, the state and the PIAA have a limit of 250 people per outside activity and 25 people per inside.
So is there any thought, just, just a question, is there any thought that? I mean, can we limit it by somehow allowing like senior parents to attend or something along those lines where they can watch their kid for, you know, one more year? Is there anything we could do?
Dr. Harner, is Sylvia online? Can she give us an estimate of the typical number of individuals on the sideline of say a football game? When you count both teams.
I do have that number.
And the staff and coaching and the staff and coaches and the referees and any other side officials.
So our team has 85 people with staff on the football team and we could assume the other team would probably be close to that. And then if you counted in cheerleaders, we're 24 with athletes and staff. And if you even looked at marching band, it was 94 with.
More, I don't count marching band because that's a temporary thing. I'm asking about referees, side judges, timers, people in the booths, the emergency vehicle staffers. There's a lot of other people on the sideline. I'm at, I'd rather have Sylvia type in. She probably knows it off the top of her head and she's here. Dr. Harner, is she online?
She might be sir, but I think you have a good number right around 200.
Man. It's a guideline though, just to be clear, right? It's not a mandate. The 250 number.
Our stadium.
It says it's a preliminary school sports guidance. That's where that shows up in the attachment. So guidance, not mandate.
What if we allowed each football player to have one adult with them or something to that effect? There's like a standard policy.
Or even two. I mean, I don't, I'm not opposed to two. If our stadium holds 3,000 people and it is outdoors and people are socially distancing, I'm sorry?
It's 4,500 people, so.
Oh, thank you. Stand corrected. So it's outdoors if they're socially distancing. Now they have to understand, parents have to understand if we're going to offer this and they're not adhering to the rules, we'll have to shut it down right away. So, but I don't see a problem if, if we have so much space outdoors, why we couldn't allow for, you know, two people per senior player. I mean, I'm, I'm just telling you my personal opinion. I, I would open, I wouldn't mind opening that up completely.
10% capacity.
Did Kalen freeze?
No.
Or did I freeze?
You froze. We can hear you.
Possibly offering 10% capacity. So that would be a total of 430 people or 470. I'm not exactly sure of the number, but.
I'm curious what the criteria was for, because obviously they made these recommendations. What was the criteria for doing that? Was it just because that was the guidance from the state or was there other factors that went into that? Dr. Harner, can you?
That was the guidance from the state to the PIAA and they have endorsed that.
There can't possibly be a, there can't possibly be a rational reason for that. If you think about it, if you've got mile high stadium and you limit that to 250 people, how in the world can you say you can't get more in there? I mean, even if you go to six feet separation, you're going to get many more than 250. I think it's just an arbitrary number, frankly.
Yeah. How many are going to be in Beaver Stadium this year, sir?
Exactly. None.
You, you can, you can say that this or that school has chosen not to allow anybody. That's not our question here. The question is what are we going to do? And Kalen's point is she'd like to see stick people in the stands. Keith's, I believe is of the same opinion and we're questioning how we want to do that.
But my question was more for, for, you know, I understand and need the limit and, and so my question was more for seniors, like this may be the last crack at it for their parents to watch them. I, I get it. There's a lot of people that want to watch it. We could, we could, this could blow up. And so my, my thought was just along those lines. That's, that's it.
Or we could at least start there and, you know, maybe down the road, allow some kind of a system where parents could rotate, the other parents could rotate to be able to at least see one game where their kid is playing.
I mean, I think. Could very well change before October as well.
But I, I, I believe if we're talking about the six foot distance and masks, that's what everybody's building their social distancing regulations around. Six foot of separation, mask wearing, cleanliness, so forth and so on. I believe wholeheartedly, and I haven't taken a tape measure out there, but you could fit a family group. And I mean a parent, both parents, siblings, aunts, uncles and grandparents of every child on the team. And space them around the field such that those family units would be at least six feet apart, if not more, and we could get them in there every game. That's just my belief. And I don't see why we can't do that and still maintain our social distancing. I understand it flies in face of the 250 person limit. I get it. But again, it's an arbitrary number. It really has no, there's, there's no reason for that number to say outside. You can't have any more than 250 because how big of an area is outside? In our case, it's that stadium and you could easily fit a lot more than 250 in that stadium at six foot separation. That's just my opinion.
But would that put our, or would our opponents maybe be less likely to want to play in our stadium if we weren't adhering to those guidelines? And I'm just sort of playing the devil's advocate here because some of these school districts are going with pretty strict measures that are even locked down and doing only virtual that they may not want to then come here.
I would like to point out right now, even though it's not a topic right now, us live streaming these games out to the public on our social media is a really good idea for us to be doing to help keep these numbers down.
We're already in the process of purchasing that the capability so we're, so we can have all our games, home games televised over live stream.
Excellent.
You know, I watched my daughter's college soccer games that way because she's up in Massachusetts and it's great. It's almost like being at the game. It's, it's a nice option.
Dr. Harner, are we going to be integrating that with the student body to do that by any chance, or are we going to put that on someone like Gary? And I know that again, not a topic, but I'm curious.
Sir, I don't understand the question.
Is that something you're going to put on like Gary's shoulders to do, or is that a, an assignment that something we're going to get students to do?
We, if we're talking about the live streaming, the live streaming project's been going on about six weeks. Sylvia came up with the, the system. Mr. Carr, our TV production person who put together graduation, he teaches that at the high school. He does the streaming and, and the play-by-play in the pass at the alumni field. He is in charge of it and will make it happen. I, I, right, right now I would like your permission to go along with Mr. McCucci's step forward by having spectators and giving every senior two, two passes and they can allow those two people, parents to come to the game. And, and that's how we can control it at the, at the gates.
Parents are two tickets for anybody.
Yeah, for, for every, no, for every senior.
I know, but are they two tickets for anybody they want to come or guardians?
Yeah.
The guardian. So they get two tickets and they're one-time colored tickets and we will control it and it starts small and, and, and see how it goes. Also see what goes on out there in, in, if we're allowed to just open up, go live, you know, that things may change.
I'm fine with that. Does any other board members have opinions on that?
I just, I just want to make sure that, you know, when we, when we start talking and we put these parameters around these things, it always inevitably blows up a little bit. And so what I would like, what I really like is the administration to, to, to have the ability to, on a case-by-case basis, evaluate a family structure for a student and make a determination whether that's two or three based on the fact that there may be stepparents and, and, and so, so on a case-by-case basis, I think we, I would really like to see the administration have some flexibility. And we ran into some problems with the graduation and we heard from some parents that there was some, you know, people that didn't get to witness that that may be very important in their life. And I'm not saying that we should then extend it to grandparents and aunts and uncles and things along those lines. But I think some flexibility in the administration to have any ability to, to kind of go up one or reasons that you guys decide would also be appropriate too.
I think a process to do that, you know, something that's there that's set out for those types of instances, you know, so that it's not just, you know, somebody's asking for this and they say yes, and then somebody else sees it and says, well, what about this? What about this? Let's set the process up so that it's fair and equitable for everybody.
Yeah, I like the two ticket idea first.
Somebody mute Steve.
Joe Cuzo, if you're on the line, could you let Sylvia come in please? Cause I think she's going to shed some light on this conversation that it's a lot more restrictive than what we're talking about.
I think Joe said he had to run off here.
Um, excuse me, I'm looking for her. I have, I've been made the host, so I will try to add her when I can.
She's sending me a text and says the PIAA rules right now say no spectators.
Yeah, that's why I asked earlier, so.
So I thought, I, I thought that the PIAA, someone messaged this said they have received in many inquiries about this and that they said it's not a PIAA decision that they're following the guidance put out there by Wolf. So it looks like there's a link. My guess is going to be that, I mean, I, I don't know. I would be interested to see if Sylvia thinks that would not be a good idea, but.
Well, she, it's not about what she thinks is what she's telling me that, that the no spectator, so.
Can you hear me now?
Sylvia is here.
Thank you. Sylvia, please tell us the rules.
As of today, through the governor and through PIAA, no spectators are allowed at events. The 250 rule has to do with outdoor and that's participants and officials. So we can have up to 250 people at a football game and cheerleaders and band would be considered part of the event. But no spectators, no, no parents, nobody else unless they would change that rule. So we're bound by that rule? Is that what I'm understanding? Correct. And it's in our athletic plan that you're approving tonight. So as of today, no spectators are allowed at any events.
But Mr. Klein raised this issue early on. He said, is it a guideline or is it a mandate? Is, is it, will be a code law? Is, is it, is it, will be a code law, something we cannot deviate from? Or is it really just a guideline?
I believe it's a mandate because every other school and suburban one is going by those guidelines we met this afternoon.
So, so they, they could very well even change before October as well. I mean, we're talking mostly about football here, but, but you know, there is still soccer, field hockey and other sports too that are still banned from spectators, correct?
They, they all are banned from spectators. We have a 25 person limit indoors for girls volleyball. And then the 250 limit, which really doesn't apply unless you're talking about two large football teams, a home band and home cheerleaders.
Yeah, I, I did our numbers with our, our, our large football team and opposition football team, the band and cheerleaders. I kind of gathered those numbers up as much as I could. We, we may hit like 260 at some time without the PIA officials because I don't know how many of those there are. And I don't know how much staff we would need to videotape the game or have any press there as well. I don't know if the press are even allowed there, but.
Press are allowed with permission of each school.
So I'm looking at this and again, this, this goes back to August 3rd. It's saying the PIA double A is actually urging for spectators to be allowed. It says the parents of these students have supported their children and oftentimes the school sports team in various ways during the student's journey and their, and there's a deep satisfaction from the ability to watch their loved ones compete in something they value. They wrote that to, a letter to Wolf. And they're saying it's ultimately up to Wolf. So if it's ultimately up to Wolf.
His thing says visitors and spectators are prohibited from attending in-person sports-related activities.
Right, but if that's a guidance or.
Prohibited. So that sounds to me like it's a mandate then.
Yeah, it seems pretty clear to me. Jeff, you can weigh in.
All right, I think, I think. Clear, that's the governor's directive.
Yeah, so we have nothing to vote on with spectators. There are none.
Well, certainly the link, the link provided called sports guidance. Right in the first word of the title is guidance. So who the hell knows what Wolf means?
I mean, we could always revisit this, right?
Anytime.
So we have another meeting. So we can always take a look at it again. We don't have to decide right now.
The first football game is not till mid-October, but soccer and field hockey do start earlier, right Sylvia?
Those games would start September 22nd. I just looked at the revised schedule. Football would be October 2nd.
I mean, it sounds like we don't have certainty on whether or not this is a mandate or what. So we definitely need to find out more about that so we can address it the next meeting. Should we decide that's something we want to pursue? Can I get an understanding from the administration as far as what we're doing with our marching band and our cheerleaders?
Sylvia, we did talk about what we talked about today with cheerleaders being added in.
Cheerleaders can attend events. They would be counted as part of the 250 allowed at, at an event along with the marching band. The league has discussed that we would have home band and home cheerleaders only in order to keep that limit for all contests at 250.
So we have to, if, if we're going to have between officials, ambulance, police, whatever else about 200 and we have a 90 person band, what do we do?
What Mr. Parker.
Chris is going to ask that question, so I figured I'd answer.
We let, we let the band march. That's what we do because it's not right. They can go in the beginning of the, the game, and this is just one board, board person's opinion. They can go in the beginning of the game before it starts. They can do their thing and they can march off.
Well, that would work. Well, because the, the football teams are, aren't on the field then. That would work, but they would have to leave then.
The other part of that is, is the color guard is, is a, a bigger part of the band as well, who would be there for the initial show in the beginning of the show, but would not need to be there in the stands while they are playing in the stands. So that would reduce the amount of people that were in the band. And I believe that the football players, you know, in the absence of, of having an audience there would appreciate having the band and cheerleaders both there in the stands cheering them on, hyping them up. I mean, again, we're, we're sort of talking mostly about football here. But you know, I don't know if the cheerleaders even go to soccer games or any other.
Football is going to be the one where you're going to get the most people. I mean, there's not 75 or 80 people on the soccer team. So you're not going to be dealing with these numbers for these other sports. But if the players are leaving when the band is on the field or, or even in the stadium and then vice versa, is this really an issue?
We got directive that right now we're not allowed to use locker rooms. That would have been a solution. We could have put the football teams in the locker rooms, had the band perform pregame. Mr. Parker and I have discussed this. And possibly bring back a pep band if we needed to reduce numbers and put a pep band in, in the stands. But we got directive today that locker rooms are not allowed to be used.
Oh, okay.
So we're just going to have to think creatively how to get the band on and have them perform their show pregame and then maybe limit a pep band during the event.
Well, if locker rooms can't be used, is it possible to use like, if we had say a tent set up at QE, you know, that the team could go in there just to, or, or even the pavilion just to, you know, discuss their pregame plans or something like that. They're still off the field, but they're, you know, that they can gather in that area. Because we were talking possibly about putting a tent outside of QE as well.
They can go into the auditorium at the high school and the other team used auditorium at QE. You can kind of keep them separated that way so they're not in the same place at the same time.
We can think of creative ways to do one of those ideas to allow the band to perform in pregame.
And of course, you know, we want the band to be live streamed as well, for the record.
The live stream will have a mounted camera. So all we need to do is turn the camera on remotely and then it can record the entire event.
Okay, so in the interest of time, it sounds like the board and the administration is in support of trying to find a creative way for our marching band and our cheerleaders to perform in some way, form or fashion. Does anyone from the board have any other questions or objections in that regard?
The only question is, does this extend to middle school sports as well? This health and safety plan?
Of course. K through 12.
All right, any other questions? All right, well, um, we'll go ahead and vote all those in favor, say aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? The motion carries unanimously. I don't know, was that an opposition or was that, no, I'm kidding. Sylvia, thank you very much for coming on and working through, being able to get our, our athletes back into doing what they do best.
You're very welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Sylvia.
Okay, we'll move on to the superintendent report, Dr. Horner.
Yes, ma'am. We have Jamie Lynch here to, to give us an update this evening on the night of construction. Lisa, have you found him?
There he is. Good evening, everyone. How's everybody?
Everybody hear me okay? Yep, we got you.
Okay. Good. Um, good to be with you tonight. Um, I provided Dr. Horner, the administration with a, a letter this week updating status on Nighting Elementary as we are trying to steam forward to a September 14th start date. And my words of wisdom unfortunately are that the song remains the same and that I can't give out guarantees in light of what's been going on with the virus and the impact that we've had on construction. The team has worked very hard. We have put in the overtime, various contractors working strategically in order to, to get in. We have a, a big weekend, this weekend, we're working both Saturday and Sunday with more than 20 electricians each day coming in to execute work. And we have a couple of big startups that are, that are coming for things like the elevator, for the kitchen, for the fire alarm system. But ultimately it all depends upon finishing those systems and getting a occupancy permit from the borough's code official, who we've been working with all along and updating as far as progress. He's been conducting his inspections and has been absolutely fantastic. Um, and everyone is really focused on the date. But we've got, you know, just a hair over two weeks to go. We've got classrooms that are really ready. They are finished. Ceilings are in, lights are in, everything is working in classrooms. Common spaces and admin is focused on now along with these systems. The carpet and admin is getting ready to go down so that we can get Scott in, in some semblance, even as early as next week. Rob has done an amazing job with helping us clean and also moving over teachers' materials from Ticken Valley. So they are crammed in every corner of finished classroom that we can find space for. The playground assembly is occurring in the back as we speak. And the first bits of new furniture will be delivered tomorrow and into next week for the building. And so we're finding places for them. So we've got more than 50 people on site every day, working in all corners of the building in order to finish. Everyone is very hopeful for that nine 14 start and to get occupancy ahead of time. You know, unfortunately I just can't give you a guarantee. I need, you know, one or two things to go haywire and we have ourselves a, a problem. And so that is where we are at, at the moment. Uh, I understand the conundrum that it puts the board in and the community in, but you know, we wanted to talk about it with you as quickly as we could just to remind everyone that there might be a slight delay in getting in, in person. That's really to sum up. I'd be very happy to answer any questions that you have.
When you say a slight delay, are you talking a number of days or weeks or months?
Well, in the correspondence that I sent to Dr. Horner, if the feeling of the school district was, you know, hey, let's make sure, let's finish as much as possible. Let's give ourselves ample time. I suggested the 28th of September as far as a, a start date. I know that that has ripple effects with not only teachers and students, but certainly also community parents. You know, we're still working regardless of the change in order to shoot for that 14th date. But we have, you know, something like the kitchen. If we don't pass the fire inspection for the kitchen and it has to be rescheduled for three or four days later, that could be the only thing that, that holds us up, Steve. Could it be something with the fire alarm? You know, we have the fire alarm manufacturer vendor coming on September 3rd to quote, shake out the fire alarm system. So that usually allows ample time for any bugs in the system and then to get to a final inspection. If there's something that goes wrong with that, then, you know, we need a, you know, a couple of more days. With any of the impacts, you know, hopefully it's only a, you know, a couple of more days. We'll certainly be in a better position next week after we get the emergency generator tested after the electricians are doing their thing. But it certainly is, you know, unfortunately, it's just not something that I can guarantee. And we're certainly not in a position to tell the contractors that they have a contractual obligation with the impact of the pandemic. It's just caused haywire with available manpower, available materials, subcontractors being able to come in a timely basis. I think we've done very well for what we've been faced with. But yeah, unfortunately, we've just seen it too many times that anything can happen.
Yeah, and I, I wasn't trying to put you on the spot there, Jamie. I was just getting a feel for, you know, when you said, you know, it could take a little bit longer, what we were talking about, but I understand and thank you.
No problem. You can always, you know, you can always put me on the spot. You know, our team, the contractor's team, they want nothing more than to deliver this building. And, you know, they are doing everything they can as safely as they can in order to try to execute.
Jamie, if all goes well and there's no more delays, the 14th is still the possibility though, right?
Yes, absolutely.
So we're looking at possibly just a, about a two week delay between the 14th and say the 28th? Is that what I'm understanding?
Yes. That's what we hope, yes. That's worst case.
That's the worst case. And that's the one thing I wanted to point out is whenever we were discussing this, we wanted to give people and parents and families the, an idea of what to do and how to plan. Should we not, you know, get back to school as quickly as we wanted to? So as you mentioned, the classrooms are done. We really hope that we can get everybody in the start of the year. It may not be possible. Unfortunately, things are changing all the time. But we hope to get more updates, especially in the days to come, to see how close we're going to be able to get to, to that deadline. Other questions for Jamie? All right, sir. In that case, thank you very much for joining us.
You're done early tonight, Jamie. You had to hang around for a couple of hours last meeting.
No problem. All of these are late night. It's just like for all of you folks. So I thank you very much and we'll be talking to you often. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. The only other item on the superintendent's report, so we're going to set a record tonight for shortness is on elementary redistricting for the 21, 22 school year. Nancy.
Good evening. We are at the point in time where we need to start working on the elementary redistricting plan that will go into effect on the fall of 2021. And in board docs is a draft charge for the committee, for the board to review. And if satisfied with it, you can approve it. If you want changes to it or whatever, we can bring it back at the next meeting. We did put out a call for volunteers to serve on the committee. What we would like to have is two representatives from each elementary building and the sixth grade center to be the core committee. And then each building would appoint an alternate so that there's always, we would always have two people available at every meeting from each, representing each building. All the meetings will be public as is always the case with our, with our community committees. So we so far have had, I believe, over 40 people that have indicated an interest in serving. So that's wonderful because there's a lot of parents that are, that are interested in participating. And so I would just call your attention to the, that draft charge that's in the agenda. And if there's any discussion on it or, you know, questions or things you want changed or you want time to think about it, any of those options is perfectly fine in terms of.
Ms. Edwards. I'm sorry, Ms. Edwards, can you just remind people how they can get involved again? I know the, the email went out, but if they didn't get the email or if they lost it, is there a way they can get involved?
Yes, anyone can still indicate an interest. You could email your principal would be the most direct way. And then they'll make sure to, to get the Google link to you to do the little form that gives us your contact information. So that's one way. You can email my assistant, Eileen Finlayson at E F I N L A Y S O N. Hopefully I did that right because I wasn't looking at it when I was talking, at Q C S D dot org. And she'd also be happy to, to get you on the list.
And can you give the audience a thumbnail sketch of what redistricting means?
Sure. Among the things that, that we believe the committee will be examining, again, it depends on the wording of the charge that you ultimately decide to give them. But when we expanded, built Nighting Elementary School, the renovation that you just heard about, and it's almost done and it is only, it's more than half full, but it definitely is not balanced with the other, other buildings in the district. And so the plan back from when the nighted construction was, has started. And so the plan back from when the Nighting construction was started was to do a redistricting process that would establish new elementary sending district boundaries in order to better balance the population, utilize the new building appropriately, and and things like that. And the other thing that may come into the mix is the future of elementary and the use of the sixth grade center building. Those are all things that have been discussed as potential parts of the conversation. Ultimately, the committee, based on the charge that you give it, will come back to you at the end of January with its recommendations about, again, it depends on the charge, but it could be grade level configuration, location of of where buildings will be, and what the new boundary line should be for elementary school attendance based on those recommendations.
So it could result in some children who go to one school, one elementary school, this this year going to Nighting, for example, or different school, right? That's the whole point is to change where people might end up going to school.
Correct. But well, it's to balance the population among the schools. When the last redistricting committee, the Hickon Valley piece was an adjustment, but when the boundary lines were originally created back in 2014, the decision of that committee at that time that was then approved by the board was to get away from open areas and have hard boundary lines for school, elementary school attendance. And that was all approved, knowing that over the five or six-year period that typically a redistricting lasts, with the understanding that there would end up being some substantial class size differences over those years, because the population of families doesn't automatically move into the areas where there's room. Like, that is not a perfect science. And so over time, we have gotten very unbalanced, and we have, you know, class sizes as low as, I think, 13, and then we have class sizes as high as like 29. And so every so many years, it is important, if you have hard boundaries, to rebalance where those boundary lines are. Talking about, you know, what happens to the students that are already there, and I don't know what this committee will recommend or what their approach will be, but in 2014, what they did is they grandfathered fourth and fifth grade students. So if you were a rising fourth or fifth grade student, you had the choice of staying in the school where you were to finish out your elementary years, or moving to your new school. And we had families that made both decisions depending on their individual circumstances. If there were younger siblings that were going to have to move to the new school, then sometimes they moved to the older child. But that was a strategy that the 2014 committee used in order to try to minimize the disruption. So any of those things may come out of another redistricting process.
Ms. Edwards, the current the current date for reporting the findings is January the 31st of next year. Is that sufficient time do you envision?
Yes.
I was also, I looked forward into the agenda and saw that this would come up for a vote tonight. If we did want to have a discussion on changing any of that wording, would you want it done now or possibly when it came up for a vote later? Or would you rather just table this and have us discuss it outside of this meeting?
Sir, this is the presentation during the superintendent's report, which will be over in a minute, and then it'll be an agenda item, but we need to get going with it, because this is a serious item of consideration for next year's budget. Very important implications, transportation, facilities at all. And so as you get into the budget cycle, because they're ready to report out at the end of January, so we're looking for a decision, modifications to the parameters. It's pretty dark. It is very basic.
Yeah, we can just modify. Let's let's wait to discuss it more, though, when we get to that agenda item, if that's okay. Dr. Harner, I do want to, I want you to address, if you could. I've been getting a lot of questions from families wondering why we're choosing not to have dedicated virtual teachers, and I think that we've thought this through. Of course, I've explained no situation is ideal, but can you give us a quick overview of, or Nancy, whichever one that you guys want to go with, as to the methodology behind that choice?
Well, I will start off by organizationally, and you all know that we'll be moving from one environment to the other. Your desire is to go into a full-up live environment for the majority of our students, and if you have students that are designated with a teacher in four weeks, that's saying that we would have to redistribute our students across across the district. A teacher ideally works several weeks out, working with their colleagues, if they're a kindergarten through fifth grade teacher, if they're in middle school, working with other social studies teachers, teach the same course, and they have all their work in Canvas, all the work in Seesaw. So then it becomes a, in our hybrid model, they're either in class, or they're asynchronous, or they're or they're in a live streaming opportunity that the teacher's providing, if they desire to do that, but they're all on the same lesson the same day. And that's the big broad umbrella of it. Nancy, go, you next, and then Dr. Hoffman, I'll let you wrap it all up. Thanks for the question. Great question.
Yeah. There are also staffing implications, because we're able to accommodate the students in a hybrid environment while maintaining social distancing, because we have all of our teachers available. So if we were to pull some teachers out of the mix to dedicate to virtual, we would not have room to have any live instruction with the students that are remaining. So it has a pretty significant staffing impact. At most levels, there's not a large enough concentration of students to necessarily be able to pull out a virtual teacher, even if we we wanted to, especially at the secondary level where students take six or, you know, take seven different courses. The students who chose virtual have access to all of the courses that are offered in the high school, not only the limited number that we would probably be able to offer if we tried to to figure out how to do that virtually. So I think the staffing piece is a is a big piece. The advantages of the method we're using is that we can accommodate that fluidity, and every student, whether live, hybrid, or virtual, or as the situation changes, as we move back and forth through them, has a classroom community. So they are part of a classroom community, even when they are accessing their instruction remotely. And if we get to a point that we're returning to school live to a greater degree, it's that they're same class, they're same teacher, the same curriculum, there's nothing different. So I think it maintains a consistency for students. That's also that's also important. So I'll stop there.
Thank you. Lisa, anything to add? Dr. Hoffman?
I think thankfully, Dr. Harner and Ms. Edwards explained that quite well. The only other piece I would add is that it actually supports our teachers as well. So if we should need to move more students into a virtual environment, so we've talked a lot about what to do if we're ready to bring students back live, but if there were to be a case where more students need to move to virtual, the teachers already have their classes set up and and those practices in place. It would be quite difficult for us to find a way for every teacher to then become a virtual teacher, or if we had just a number of students moving, the caseloads would become quite unmanageable for our teachers who are virtual. That's what some districts who tried to do this in the spring found. They started with a virtual teacher who had 25 students, and quickly, within a few weeks, they were expected to teach 100 or more students. And we certainly don't want to put that additional burden on our teachers.
Thank you. This was very well thought out. I can understand from the public's perspective why they would look at it one way and assume, why can't we make it work? But just know that there's so many logistical things. There's continuity that we're trying to achieve. If a dedicated virtual teacher were to get sick, for instance, then we wouldn't have any other teachers to fill that. It's just so complicating. So thank you for addressing that. I had a lot of questions that I did get on that. Dr. Harner, anything else for your report?
I did have one extra question, too.
You're denied. No, I'm kidding. What? What do you want?
It was, I think it's another one that's been asked a lot about the block scheduling and the tech school students, and how it's going to work with them, that they will only be able to attend tech school for four days if they're in hybrid and one day in Quakertown. So I think we need a little bit more clarity on that for the.
I'm actually glad you brought that up, Chris, because that was on my list. So yeah, let's let's talk about that. And again, the methodology behind what we choose.
Sorry, did Dr. Harner disappear? He ghosted out on us, guys.
He answered his question. He's done.
He's like, I'm out.
Mr. V was in here, and he had a pretty good explanation for.
Well, I would say, let's, if maybe he got kicked off, we can always, it was on my list. I did want to address it. So, Dr. Harner, are you with us? If not, we can come back to it. All right.
Is there any way we can let Dr. Hoffman answer that question? That seems to be a Programs and Services kind of question.
I think the question on the high school schedule is probably best answered by an administrator from the high school, but I don't think that that's probably appropriate at this time. I know that, from what I understand, Dr. Harner had indicated that he was going to speak about that after having spoken to Mr. V, and I don't know where Dr. Harner went. That was my understanding.
Yeah, I feel the most.
I'm not prepared to speak about that right now.
I have worked with Mr. V and am prepared to address the question, but I normally would wait for Dr. Harner to ask me, assuming that he wants me to address the question, so.
Why don't we wait for Dr. Harner?
Yeah, let's wait. Let's wait.
We can pick this up again at the end of the meeting if you want to, right? I mean, we can go on and come back.
Sure. Okay, let's go ahead and move on to our standing committee reports. I'm not sure that some of these are applicable, but the first one on the agenda is the policy committee report. I don't believe we've had a meeting. Mrs. Weed?
Sorry, my husband was talking to me. No, we have not had a meeting, so there is nothing to report.
All right, finance, Mr. McCucci, I know that you all had a meeting today.
We did. So I have a couple agenda items here to talk about. So the last board meeting, Mr. Kern made a motion to extend the discount period and eliminate the penalty period for the property taxes. Zach and his administrative team reviewed the motion and provided the following update, that the motion to extend both through June is not legal, and it can only be extended through the end of the calendar year. The revenue loss that was projected is north of $265,000, and we would have to somehow figure out how to, if we extended the discount period, refund those folks, the 2% that have already paid their taxes. And so the recommendation of the committee was not to move forward with that motion. The administration reviewed for us the impact of COVID on our budget. At the present time, we spent over $1 million on COVID-related expenses. As we talked about, the finance committee, we started this year off with roughly a $5.2 million deficit, and due to attrition, attritional savings, we're currently projected to have a deficit of 4.3 million. There's still a lot of unknown factors, including the COVID and the local economy. We'll continue to explore budget strategies to reduce the spend and provide monthly updates to the entire board. On a positive note, the district did receive a refund in the amount of $81,000 for dental dento. The district is self-insured, and due to the dental offices being closed for the end of the last school year, we paid more premium than we had in claims, which is good news. We said we may have more cavities next year, so we may have to spend that. The administration reviewed the attritional savings from the retirements and resignations of our, some of our teachers, and to date, the savings approximately $1.5 million. However, the resignations and retirement and leave have left staffing holes, and currently we have about 15 unfilled teaching positions and 13 unfilled aid positions in the network, in the district, I should say. I know they're working hard at at closing that gap as well. The administration provided an update on the nurse sub shortage. They reached out to some staffing agencies, local hospitals, and provided a consideration for increasing our end sub nursing rate from $20 an hour to $25 an hour. I'll likely be making that motion later on this evening. Then Rodston, the financial director, provided an update for the local revenues compared to last year. There's minimal data so far available to us, as all the taxes are not due yet. However, compared to prior same time last year, we're roughly $4,000 lower than we were. So they, so we talked about just continuing to watch that and provide more of analysis in the future meetings, hopefully up September. And then last but not least, Mrs. Pallone discussed something called compensatory services for special education. I wrote down a couple notes along that line. So PDE last year started something called COVID compensatory services. In the first two weeks of school, the special ed are going to evaluate students. And within three months timeframe, they'll have to perform individual IEP plans for 900-plus students. And the really, the goal is here is to evaluate where students were last year, between March and the end of school, and really this year. And if there's a gap that exists, they're, they may be eligible for what's called E S Y, which stands for Extended School Year, and some other caveats around that. This is a mandate out of Harrisburg, and it's partially funded. Right now, we received, I think, $42,534.51 in a grant. But just to let everybody know, this expenditure could be north of a half a million dollars plus, depending on the findings of the assessments that are completed. I wanted to highlight, this has been one of my concerns all along, which was, you know, we we know what we do when we're in school, but we don't know how well we do when we're out of school and virtually. So I'll be interested to hear the results from this pool here on on that topic. So, Zach, did I miss anything?
You did not. That covered all of our topics.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Excellent. And we'll move on to the facilities committee. Mr. Spear?
We did not meet.
All right. Well, the next on the agenda is going to be Mr. Jackson. You have three items, Bucks County IU Legislative and Quakertown Community Educational Foundation.
All right. As typical, I have uploaded the minutes of our IU meeting we met last week, last Tuesday. You can read those and for that information up on the board. One thing I will do want to bring up to everybody who's listening, the intermediate unit typically is the special education arm of the district. It does vast array more than just that, but that's what most parents look at it as. And those services are usually geared only towards children of school age. Now, that extends to the year 21 age of the child. So if your child starts school and has an early birthday, they turn, they're 21 when they start their, the school year, they turn 22, they'll finish the school year in an IU program, but after that, they're in the adult system. They're no longer available for any of the IU services typically. The IU is undertaking the process of investigating how they can change that, how they can begin working to serve the adult community as well, which is what I think, something I think is a really great use of their resources and efforts. And that'll have no impact on the school district, obviously, because we are only addressing our students. So it's just for parents who are out there and are interested in these types of issues. I just wanted to let everybody know the IU is undertaking that. Everything else, you please take the time to read the awesome news and the. Everything else, you please take the time to read the awesome news and the board meeting minutes, so you know what else we're doing. Moving on to legislative report, every time I go to the IU meeting, I get a legislative report from our legislative liaison, and I include that on the public comment, public contents, so everybody can see it. One thing I would say is it's almost useless to look at it right now because it's everything, okay, this is what the governor has said. This is the way regulations are coming down from Harrisburg, and unfortunately, that changes every day. So I'm not sure how current or how relative any of this is anymore, but there it is for your perusal. The Ed Foundation, I cannot speak to the Ed Foundation because I did not attend a meeting. I'm not sure if Dr. Hoffman or if perhaps Chad or online wish to speak to it. But I cannot. So we'll just leave that one lie unless someone else wants to try, try me in. So we'll go to Ms. Mitchell.
Okay. Mr. Jackson, I had one quick question about your IU report. The, the IU looking into extending services to adults, is that just our local IU or all of the state IUs?
Currently, as far as I know, it's only something that the Bucks County Intermediate Unit has undertaken. However, similar to the tech school, which has a combination of sending districts and a single chair person for the organization. The IU has several different county agencies and multi-county agencies and a single chair annually to run that statewide group. And right now, that individual is our Bucks County Chair, Mr. Mark Hoff, Dr. Mark Hoffman. So I would imagine he would recommend a similar approach to the other districts, the other, the other IUs. However, that ability is based upon their funding, you know, how, how much revenue they, they're generating of the programs, how available services are out there, what their staffing levels are in those areas. So it's, it's very much like any other district issue. Do they have the manpower? Do they have the resources? Do they have the money to go after and get that service to their community? So I cannot speak to anybody but us.
Thank you. I do not have anything for the goals committee. So I'll move on to tech school. Mr. Akmanowicz.
Last meeting of the Upper Bucks County Technical School was August 20th, which was last week. We had an executive session. The director reported donation of some soldering guns. Enrollment is up from last year. We are in the process of setting, helping set up a memorial fund for a previous student by the name of Eric Schwartz, who unfortunately passed away. That's going to offer scholarships every year. We went over some details regarding our emergency generator, building maintenance, and also, much like our school, the tech school is also having a shortage of substitutes. So if anybody's interested in substituting at the tech school, please reach out. We did the first reading of some policies, policy 105, 105 dash 1 and 102, policy 101, 101 and 102. You can review those policies if you go to our board docs. We did pay some bills, financial reports, and then, of course, we passed the health and safety plan for the 2021 school year. We accepted the Perkins Grant, adjusted some cafeteria pricing, hired our school physician, signed a memorandum of understanding in regards to COVID, as well as the BCTE TAP program textbooks, and approved our integration into cooperative bids consortium. That's basically about it. In summary, as far as what we covered, I do want to point out one or two takeaways from the meeting. School for the technical school students for Quakertown will start on the second of September. And so that is different than the Quakertown's, their start date. So anybody in the tech school, Dr. Horner just went offline. He's like, I'm out of here before he asked me questions.
He's back on. He's back.
We'll start in a second.
Maybe a good segue into that earlier question of how the schedules will work out then.
I, I agree.
Yeah, yeah, I'd love to bring that up, actually. So can you answer any questions on how we're going to get started on Wednesday, the second with our, our students?
Dr. Horner, is that, you're directing that to him?
Yes, yes, I was.
Dr. Horner, are you back?
Mr. V has been working with, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello? You are breaking up. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Mr. V, are you, you in the, could you unmute him, Lisa? He is the one doing the direct coordination with, with Jeff, making sure our students will be there on the second.
I'm here, Dr. Horner, happy to explain. Actually, just today, in coordination with Levy Bus Company, we were able to send out the bus pickup times for our students who will be transported starting on September 2nd. The times that were sent out today, were sent out to our families, are the times for the period of September 2nd through September 11th. And so that covers the days that the high school is not in session. Sometime, I'm thinking by the end of next week, we should be able to send out all the bus times for all students who do not attend the tech school and for the tech students for the period that tech school and the high school are both in session at the same time. So just this afternoon, all those times went out to our families. So any family who may not have received that, feel free to contact the house principals at the high school. We will coordinate with you and the, and Levy Bus Company, but all those, all that information went out this, this afternoon. Students, students starting on September 2nd at the tech school will be transported to and from their home.
And they will be going to school five days until we, if they, even if they're registered as hybrid with us, until we would start then?
That's correct. I don't believe that first week is five, a full five-day week, but that's correct. They will be going every day until we start.
And then, could you explain, I had asked the question earlier in the meeting, but we are waiting for Dr. Horner to get back up. Explain how the, the students attending hybrid or virtual, that would work out with their scheduling.
With Dr. Horner's permission? Okay. So the way, the easiest way to explain this, and I've had a lot of questions about this from both parents from the tech school, as well as last week at the, at the meeting from the tech, from the tech school. The easiest way to explain this is that we are on a, in a shortened bell schedule with, with an AV block. And, and I'm going to explain this on the block, but really, the limiting factor in this is the shortened day. But, but for example, a student who is scheduled to go to our tech school in the afternoon, that means that that student is scheduled to be in the high school in the morning. Makes sense. If a student is scheduled to be at the high school in the morning, that means that on the days that we offer morning classes, that student has to make a choice whether to attend that morning at our school or to attend that morning at the tech school. You can't be in two places at the same time. And so if at 8:00 in the morning, the bus to the tech school leaves for the, for the, for the classes, that, because our morning classes are all day, then, then that student has to make a choice whether to stay at the high school and follow their classes or go to the tech school and follow their classes there. And because those classes fall at the same time, once per week, those students who are on the hybrid schedule would stay behind and, and take their classes at the high school, or otherwise, they wouldn't take any classes at the high school. And the other four days, they would be able to attend the tech school. Any student who is on a virtual model with us would be able to go to the tech school every single day, because even though we are offering synchronous opportunities and synchronous activities for the students, they will be also available to the students in an asynchronous manner. Picture a teacher doing a, a, a science lab, for example, or a lab demonstration for students. They might well record that as well for students to access that at a later time. And so they would be able to access that either synchronously or asynchronously. And for those students who would be in two places at the same time, they would have to access that asynchronously. So they would be able to attend virtually with us. They can go five days a week. If they go on a hybrid with us, they would be four days a week.
So the, the one question that then did come up was also if, if we had, parents are wondering, they would say, I would like to possibly switch my child to virtual, but then I don't want to lose my place if we go back to full-time. And my initial first choice was full-time. So, you know, if we would say that they could switch to full-time virtual so they could attend tech school full-time, could we guarantee that they wouldn't lose their original first choice in the registrations if we go back to full-time?
Under the current plan, no, but if the things change, possibly. So under the current plan, there's no, in no, in the sense is not as a guarantee. Is there a possibility? Yes. However, what we have said is that students, there's some fluidity between students going to virtual and back to hybrid. We still, under this current model, have to ensure that we maintain our distances and stay within our health and safety plan. If adding additional students to the hybrid model, in this case, from virtual to hybrid, we will have to first ensure that we have the room capacity in our building, as well as Levy has the capacity on their buses to transport in order to make that happen. So far, for students who have requested it, that has not been an issue yet. So, so far, we have been able to honor those requests. But it is a question that we will pose for everyone who goes from virtual back to hybrid at this time to make sure that we can make that change while staying within our current health and safety plan. If that would change to go back, going back full, and the safety plan would be altered, then that situation would obviously change.
Mr. V, can you, if the students are missing a day at the tech school, can you help me understand how that would affect their hours of their, in their program at the tech school and what that would do ultimately?
Do you mean missing a day as in?
Well, not going five days.
One in the five. Going from five to four?
Right.
Yeah. So at the meeting last week with the Upper Bucks County Technical School, at their board meeting, the director mentioned to us and has mentioned in public that the students, even though they come four days a week, or 80% of the time, they will be able to meet all their hourly requirements for their certification programs.
Thank you.
All right. Sounds like we have a, a pretty good idea of the rational rationale used in this decision.
Announcement that I want to make real quick, if you don't mind. I want to make a announcement about the way that I'm going to be calling our next tech school meeting. We're going to be having the next tech, tech school meeting in person. In person, in such a sense that the board is going to go to the school, and we are going to broadcast the meeting from our individual lap stops while observing the physical distance in the, what, think, think we're going to do the cafeteria. The meeting's going to be broadcast just like this, so that we are all together like our students would be. And then the community can watch and participate as we have been doing via Zoom.
Dave, can I recommend you take headphones with microphones?
Yeah, actually, that was one of my recommendations to the board members to absolutely bring them with, so that we could all not talk over one another and have the echo thing going on. Thank you for the suggestion. It was a good one.
Yeah. And I certainly wanted to thank Mr. V and our district administration team for building this crazy schedule that seems to make no sense. Overlaps each other and, you know, there's so many moving parts to this that I couldn't imagine how they coordinate all this. And if we end up changing this down the road, I'll pre-apologize for it. So thanks again.
All right. Thank you all. I'm going to go ahead and move on. I do not have a president's report, so I will move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the appointment of a new board vice president. And Mr. Jackson was the previous board vice president while holding, holding his Region Three member seat. But because he resigned in that seat and was reappointed, we need to appoint a new vice president. So I will need appointments from the board to vote.
I'd like to know, actually.
I'll second that.
Any other nominations?
Assuming, Ron, you want to do it again.
I'd be.
And he does. Okay. All right. Just checking. All right.
Any other nominations? Last call for that. Okay. So in this instance, I've never done one of these before. Do I just?
Go in favor, do a roll call if you want.
Okay.
Just all in favor.
All right. So all in favor of Mr. Jackson continuing to be my right-hand man as vice president? Say aye. Is there anyone opposed? Okay. Welcome back.
Thank you, Paul. Thank you much.
All right. We're going to move on to board committees, and there's a couple of appointments that we need to make. So Mr. Anderson previously served as a facilities member as well as human resources committee, education and curriculum committee. There's some other appointments as well. Upper Bucks Tech School, alternate. So, so I'm making sure I'm saying this correctly. Do we need to appoint an alternate or are we?
Moved into the position that Mr. Anderson had because he was the alternate, and then you need a new alternate.
No, I think, isn't it, I, I can stay the alternate. We just need to, I thought.
That's fine, too. That's, my understanding was that you were moving into Mr. Anderson's position as the alter.
I'm happy to move back to just being.
Okay.
The lame alternate. And then.
And I spoke to Mrs., Mr. Kern, Mrs. Mitchell about that. Prior to leaving the board, I had been on the JOC, and I would respectfully ask to, to go back to that.
You know they're not serving meals yet.
Aw, darn it.
That's a good perk.
Taking it back now, right?
No, I'm, I'm still good with it.
I'm okay with it.
Yeah. I mean, is there anybody else that is interested even? Because if there's not, that makes it pretty easy.
Yeah, I'm happy to step aside for Steve.
You, you know, you can still attend to get the meals, John, even as an alternate.
Oh, you're thinking, Chris.
You might be able to start a drone program if you keep dripping on them.
Yeah, I was thinking of UV drones for, you know, decontamination. That'd be a fun project at the tech school.
Oh, my gosh, back to drones. All right, Mr. Klein, you just won the seat on the JOC. So then we still need somebody for facilities, right?
And you also need someone as an ed committee chair.
I really. Motion to reappoint everybody to where they were.
Wasn't Mitchell the ed committee chair?
He was.
No, I was the ed committee chair. Oh, no, I'm sorry. You know, I'm thinking of the Ed Foundation. My bad.
Mr. Anderson was the education committee chairperson, and he served as a member of the committee on the facilities committee. So you would need to appoint an ed committee chair and another member for the facilities committee.
I wish I would have.
Is anybody opposed to me? Is, is anybody opposed to me stepping back to where I was and Mr. Klein taking over for where Mr. Anderson left? Just make it simple.
Mr. Klein, are you?
Reasonable to me.
Are you okay with that?
I think that's a great idea.
I'm okay with that.
We can always change it down the road.
Yeah.
It becomes the education committee chair.
December is only a couple of months away, guys.
All right, let's do it. We're going to just do what everybody else said.
May I please repeat just for the minutes to make them accurate? So Mr. Klein will be the facilities committee member, replacing Mr. Anderson. Mr. Klein will replace Mr. Anderson on the JOC, and Mr. Kern will remain the alternate. And Mr. Klein will replace Mr. Anderson as the education committee chair. Correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to go ahead and move on to our fiscal consent agenda. The district has received multiple proposals from vendors for daily substitute nurses. The administration is still reviewing them and will provide to the solicitor the best proposal for review. This motion allows the administration to finalize the selection process and have an agreement in place before school starts. So I'll need a motion to vote on that.
So moved.
I'll second.
By Mr. Jackson. They've got it first.
Okay, discussion.
Could you, to clarify, Keith, do you want to clarify this? Could you, uh, to, to clarify, Keith, do you want to clarify, uh, this since we talked about it at the finance committee?
I think, I think the biggest thing to, to recognize with this is that this just, uh, so the thought is that we could, we could lock up a contract with a, with a agency that would be able to provide nurses as a last ditch effort to filling vacancies in our current staffing. And obviously we're hopefully going to look for an organization that, that wants to partner with us and not charge us, you know, a fee just as like a retainer, uh, but that would be on a, as in like a on-demand as needed. That's basically it.
Basically, the nurses are going to be for, when, when our nurses call out. So we're not going to be leaning on the service daily necessarily is the plan, right?
Correct. I think our, our plan is to, is to be at full staff as much as we can.
But we need to make sure there's somebody with medical training in the buildings.
Correct.
All right, any other discussion before we vote? All those in favor say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? The motion carries unanimously. All right, I'm going to go ahead and move on to, excuse me, the facilities consent agenda. Um, I'm sorry. Yes. So we are, uh, looking at, I'll need a motion to approve the attached contract with S H I and Quaker Town Community School District for battery backup for the Nighting Elementary Network closets.
So.
Motion. Oh, second Jackson got that one.
Gotta be.
I'll let you have it. I'll take the second. I'll let you have it. I'll take the second. Okay?
Yeah.
You get a prize or something at the most motions or something?
Or we got 20 more minutes to get out of here, Keith.
Keith, we waited for you. Nothing ever get done.
I'm, I'm working hard here, guys. All right. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries unanimously. Next is the human resources consent agenda. On that agenda, we have uh, various leaves, retirements, resignations, under professional staff, supervisory, technology staff, support staff, unit pay, game workers and substitute staff. So I'll need a motion to vote on those items.
So moved. Too late.
Jenny, are you going to second then?
Yes, I seconded it.
All right, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries unanimously. Next is our policy and programs consent agenda. We already voted on item A. So we will be voting on items B through G or charge for the 2020 redistricting committee. The contract between Life Works School, Special Education Services and Quaker Town Community School District for the upcoming school year. The contract between Brett DeNove and Associates. Uh, the contract between Entrado Interactive Services and DocuSign. Oh God, I need to thank God for DocuSign, right? Um, that's an inside thing. I have, I've had to sign so many different contracts. Anyway.
Kaylin, before you make a motion, uh, Chris had wanted to discuss the redistricting charge, I believe. Is Chris, am I accurate with that?
Yeah, I was just.
Want to pull that aside?
Going to try to make a motion to pull that aside. So you can make the motion and I'll second it.
Well, no, I mean.
You know, you don't need a motion. You can just ask that be removed from the consent agenda.
Right. I mean, let, let's. Kaylin, can we rephrase the motion on, on that? We want to make a motion to approve C through G, three, C through F.
Sure. Do I have that?
So you just, you just, you just read them.
Okay.
So we know what they are. I'll make the motion that we approve C through F.
And I'll second it.
I make that motion.
All those in favor, discussion, sorry. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? All right, the motion carries. So we'll be voting on item C through G. Uh, or F there, really. I'll need a motion to approve those items and then we'll get back to item B.
We just.
Wait, okay. Oh, sorry.
Just vote?
Do we?
Mr. Jackson made the motion.
That was the vote.
And Mr. Spear seconded it.
So we still need a.
Seconds after that, didn't we? Did, did I miss it? Did we not just vote?
No.
Yes, we did.
Yes, we did. We, we voted on C through F.
Yeah, you said aye. Everybody said aye.
Okay, got it.
I mean, I don't care. Um, all right. So then we're talking about B. Uh, so we'll need a motion to approve B so we can discuss it.
So moved.
Second. I'm Mr. Al Monowans.
All right, let's discuss.
Chris, you're up.
Okay, I'm up. So my, my, um, item that I'd like to discuss on this is mostly just charge number two. And, um, what I wanted to do was make the discussion that we do not include any options for closing buildings at this time. That I believe our, our current situation with this COVID virus does not allow us the, the flexibility to be able to handle missing one more building. There, there may very well be a chance that next year we could need more space. And I know right now we don't have the budget to hire more teachers, build more space, but that very well could happen. So I don't want to corner us. I don't want us, I don't even want that to be a consideration at this point. I believe we could have this, um, redistricting committee have the charge of how to redraw the lines to more equally balance out our elementary schools without even including the discussion of closing buildings at this point.
And I agree with that. I, I think not only in this time, but, uh, in any other time where we're, we're talking about class sizes. Just having those extra, what is it? 220, 250 desks over Q E. That helps. And if we start closing or even considering closing another school, now we're getting to the point where we're getting, you know, possibly increasing class size again because we've gone and closed the school.
Yeah, I, I agree too. I, I don't want to see us even planning to close another school yet.
So I would say, I would agree. Take that off the, the table. That's not even a consideration.
Well, I think, I think that's, I think it's, I think, you know, while I agree, you know, and, and let me be clear, I wasn't, you know, didn't vote to close schools, uh, got on this board because of closing schools. One thing I do want to just point out is that if, if you continue to have an exorbitant structural deficit uh, and you haven't explored that as an option in the future, then you don't know what you don't know. And that says, you know, can we even compensate? Can we, can we compensate for those kids? Without drastically doing something. And so, you know, you have a huge deficit now. We think we'll be able to close it by the end of the year, but who knows what the future is going to hold. And my thought is it would be an exercise in at least giving us the knowledge of what it could look like. And then you can base an educated decision on it. I mean, emotionally speaking, your, your point, Chris, sounds 100% reasonable. I wouldn't want to lose another school. I wouldn't want, Brian, to your point, I wouldn't want to increase class sizes. We just spent, you know, $37 million or whatever the final price tag of Nighting will end up being uh, to accommodate some more kids in a more modern school, maybe give them a better experience. And so I, I think it's, it's worth at least exploring as opposed to just digging our heels in and saying there's no options.
Well, could we possibly say we'll just vote to redistrict and then we'll reevaluate this and possibly vote on it, say next year? Just.
Well, see, see, I think.
We have too many.
My point is, I, I don't think you're going to have, you're not going to have enough time to do a bunch of analysis work, Chris. If you don't.
No, no, I, I'm talking for the 22, 23 year, you know, like.
Might be making a decision next year on, on something financially. If, if this gap continues to close, you may be presented with closing programs as your immediate, I mean, if you don't change, we, we're not changing our spending. We have a $5.2 million deficit now. All I'm saying is if you don't explore it, the next budget season, if we're faced with even a larger deficit to close, you're going to have to make a decision at that point. And your only decision to make is going to be programs.
But we could still close a school without having a parent committee.
So let me just, let me just throw out an idea. So instead of like crippling the future, you could instead say have the committee report to us frequently that might show you, are they even headed that direction? Cause right now you're just assuming that that might be a direction and you don't want it to happen. But I agree with Keith that that shortchanging, uh, you know, an, an option now is like, why? Cause it doesn't mean we're going to vote on it. Whatever the committee does is not sacrosanct and, and that, you know, they're bringing us suggestions. So if you saw suggestions creeping in at a certain point, you know, you have, you can at least, you know, influence the, the team, but I think trying to reduce the number of options prematurely is, is just not wise. No matter, frankly, no matter what it is, whether it's school closing or anything, it's just let them come out because they, we haven't voted on it, right? That, that's the time where we can discuss and vote.
Well, I, I even believe looking at like this year's attendance numbers or, or registration numbers, we're not going to have a very accurate picture. We, we lost, you know, right now Faith Christian has more students than they ever have. They have a lot of our students that may want to return after a year. We lost some students to cyber charters. They may return. We're not going to have an accurate picture even of what our attendance may be.
Right, but Chris, beautiful point. You bring that up and then we would be uh, foolish to, you know, try to bet the farm on some imaginary numbers. So if that's the case and we don't have good numbers, then we would be more conservative and hold on to the buildings. But the point is, why cripple the discussion now?
Yeah, as a board member, as a board member, you want to have all the options. You want to know the options that are good. The options that are what if and the options that are bad. You want to put everything in front of you and then you make the right choice. The fact that we're asking this committee to look at the possibility, uh, the, the, and, and all it says is the future use. If you notice, it does not say to close. It says the future use. What if that simply means, okay, we're going to convert the sixth grade center to another elementary school? Or if we're going to make Quaker Town Elementary and the sixth grade center a combined second middle, middle school. I mean, there's, it doesn't say, look at the way to close the schools. It says, look at the way to use the schools. And John's right. We are just putting out, we're asking them to put in front of us lots of options. We are the board and we can make a decision at that time that if they recommend closing it, we can say, no, we don't want to close it. It's a good idea. We're going to go through section option. Plus during the committee reports, if you have a lot of passion and a lot of data, go to the, go to these committees, present your information. I know, but I'm just saying that's where you want to present your, your issues. You don't want to shut down the discussion before it even happens. I mean, that, I don't think that's the proper way to look at this. They have to be, have the freedom to explore all the options available to them. And to recommend the decision appropriately. And you should have the fear, freedom to go there and to listen. And if you think they're going to push for closing the school, to suggest, well, this is why you shouldn't. But again, it doesn't say, look at how to close the school. It says, look at how to use those two buildings. That's what it says. That's what the charge is. And you're asking us to change the charge. The charge is not to close the schools. It's how to use them. And that's a good charge for this committee.
But Mr. Jackson, do you think closing the school, do you think the, the possibility of the closing a school at this point? Or, you know, in my scenario, dealing with, uh, class sizes, do you think that's a good idea?
I don't have enough data and I don't have enough data in front of me to answer that question right now because I haven't seen all the data that exists out there. Now, this is why we're going to have, I mean, Nancy Anne, for all I know, because she does this, uh, I think she does this in her spare time. She looks at population data. She looks at, uh, housing trends. She looks at what's happening in our district all the time. She might actually have a thought or two, but I'm not going to ask her sitting here and I'm not going to probe her for that information. My point is, this is something that this committee is charged to do, to get all this information, look at it, have a recommendation and put it in front of us. So I can't answer that question right now. I don't think you could either.
My third.
Oh, absolutely. I think it's a terrible idea.
Well, Brian, would you, would you, would you approve a 15% tax increase next year? That's where. Would you do it right now? That's.
Say it again.
Would you approve right now a 15% tax increase next year?
No.
It's my, it's my point. You, you have no data to make a decision.
Well, my third argument is that, that in my notes that I had wrote down here about this was that if we do remove this option from the charge for the committee, it forces them to think creatively, to work around this redistricting and not have this option. So it, it, it sort of, it in a sense, it makes them work with what we have to try to solve these problems. And I don't think that we are in a position, especially, you know, Nancy Anne looks at these housing datas and, and population datas, but she cannot predict COVID. None of us can. None of us have done it well so far.
Why are you focused, why are you focused on the idea that anybody's going to recommend to close these buildings when it simply says what the use is? Why do you think to yourself that that means that they're going to come in there knowing that we want them to close some school? What is your?
Wasn't that part of our plan?
The, the four to six billion dollar budget deficit that we discussed in the finance committee pretty much tells me that this is going to be a very hotly discussed item in this redistricting committee. That deficit is there and it's real. And that is what's going to cause one of our buildings to close. So if we force this committee to, to work around that, to say, we have to work with what we have, we may get an answer to to our budget questions without having that option. And that's what I'd like to try.
So Ron, you had been on the board for quite some time and I know this is not the first time you've heard rumors QE is going to close in the beginning of 2021, 2022. Okay. It was that, you know, I think you were on the board when that came to fruition. So the surprise that it's going to be on people's mind, I find to be, you know, confusing.
I mean.
Well, I mean, look, look, good, good. Kaylin, you haven't spoken yet. Go ahead.
I was just going to say that I, I think, again, this is just exploring our options. We need to leave all the options on the table, do the analysis. And come back with a decision. I think not knowing that the argument about not knowing what the future holds, it also is applicable to us if we don't do the research to understand all of the implications of the potential risk that exists in the future. So if we feel like the direction of the redistricting committee is going in a direction that we don't feel the board supports, we can always address it that, at that time. But I, I think it would be, it would be irresponsible of us to not look at all the options given the deficit, given the fact that if we don't have a good analysis, if we're faced with this difficult decision, nobody wants to close schools, obviously. But we also have to look at our taxpayers as a whole. And I, I feel strongly that we're not giving the direction to tell them to close the schools, we're simply telling them to look at all of the options of how we can accommodate the students and, and also be fiscally responsible.
Chris, I wanted to answer, uh, answer to, I think it was Mr. Jackson's point about why do we think that? There have been administrators who have said that's the goal, uh, was to potentially consider closing QE uh, and have moved toward that. And I believe it was the Schrader group who did the, uh, analysis back in 14 or 15 or whatever year it was. One of the plans that we've sort of been following along has QE closing and part of that is either closing it or closing it and moving the, um, admin building there with the, uh,
Oh, closing the district.
Well, yeah, moving the district office from where it is over to QE and, and things like that. So that's, that's where we're coming from as far as our, our thought that that is going to be on the table, even though it doesn't say it specifically in the charge.
Would you like?
Go ahead, John. Go ahead, John.
Would, would you like to put some wording in? Cause I, you know, like the, the, maybe the way to phrase it, because I, Keith brings up probably the most important point, which is if, if our backs are up against the wall and, and who knows, like, what if we lose a thousand kids or something like that? Because they go somewhere else. Like something draconian and you, and you just put a shackle on us to, you know, to have no wiggle room. So it's, it's why. So it's, it's why do that? I think that was Keith's point, is you, you're gonna have to face that financial challenge no matter what. But would you prefer some wording in that it says things like care about class size? Because I, you know, I, I don't know if that fits under academic program, but I don't see anything in there about class sizes, you know? And maybe even put something in there with a preference not to close schools. I mean, I'm okay if you wanna shade it a little bit, but I wouldn't wanna shut down. I could, I could live with, with something like that, but my concern about the class size discussion would be the discrepancy in what I think is an appropriate class size and what they believe is an appropriate class size. Uh, so I think that's a bigger discussion than something we can do tonight necessarily.
Jenny had a comment, but Jenny didn't get to respond.
I was gonna say, I agree with, um, actually with you, Kaylin, I was jumping in after you talked. Um, as people know, I am definitely, uh, got on this board because I strenuously disagreed with closing Milford and disagree with closing schools, but I think we need the, the study and the option open to consider what we do, because I think we're in a world of financial hurt, and even though it's something I could vote against, I think it's important to at least evaluate and consider our options.
I would consider it like this. Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry, you can finish.
Well put.
No, I would, I would just say, I, I just wouldn't take it off the table for, for that reason, Chris.
Yeah, I'm not, I don't wanna take it off the table either.
All right, guys, can we vote on this? Because.
One last sentence here, is I, I believe that we should evaluate this, and, and this is something that should come up, but not now. I believe we need to do redistricting because Nighting's only gonna be half full, and that's all this, this committee should be charged with.
Half full is not accurate, but.
This here is like evaluating vegetation in a forest that just burned down. You can't do it. Right now, with all this COVID, with all this going on, you know, we don't have space. We're moving kids around. We're sending kids. Our kids may not even go to school this year. We can't consider closing a school. I mean, who knows? We, we could go to school for two weeks and everything could go virtual. We could, we could say we're gonna try and reopen the schools and have to distance everyone at six feet, and then.
A long sentence, Chris.
Yes, but then have that excuse of, we don't have the space. How can we say?
You like looking at the data. You like supporting your arguments with data. If, if, what you're saying is kick this down the road for a year and a half. All we're saying today is, let's look at it today. We don't have to make any decisions. Well, what, one of the things that I fear is, is we are going to hit January. We're gonna go in the next budget season, and we're gonna be scrambling in the 23rd hour to come up with potentially major cuts. And in that case, we won't even have allowed these months leading up to it to give us the information to make an educated decision. And then what's gonna happen is, we're gonna hastily make decisions. That is, that is more worrisome to me, that all of a sudden, and, and, and I've seen it, I've seen it in businesses, I've seen it in, 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 in systems throughout, you know, where I've worked. Forced to hastily make a decision without due respect to the process which, which we couldn't enable now, which, which may end up being it's not feasible to close it.
Kaylin, let's vote.
I know, I, I agree. I think, is, is there gonna be a motion or not? Because otherwise.
The motion's already made, this is a discussion.
I know, I'm saying as far as changing it, okay. Let's vote then. Do we need to do a roll call?
I think this should probably be a roll call vote, since there appears to be a difference of opinion. That way I can clearly record who's voting for what. Is that all right?
Sure.
Yeah, the motions, and the motions is to approve it as presented, so.
The motion is to approve the charge for the 2020 redistrict, redistricting committee as presented. A vote for yes is to approve it, a vote for no is to not approve it. Mr. Kern.
Yes.
Mr. Akmanowicz.
Yes.
Ms. Weed.
Yes.
Mr. McCucci.
Yes.
Mr. Reimers.
No.
Mr. Spear.
No.
Mr. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Jackson.
Yes.
Mrs. Mitchell.
Yes.
Seven to two, the motion passes.
For the record, I voted yes because, not that I wanna see schools closed, because I'm agreeing to see the data.
That's all I'm asking for.
Yeah, ditto.
All right, thank you, guys. So, um, we just have some information items that's left on the agenda. There's a Title I schoolwide plan for Quaker Town Elementary that you can view, um, and Act 44 Safety Briefing, and then there's an update on QE, uh, excuse me, the PPE. Um, I just wanna confirm, uh, let's see, I'm looking at through the ETA of arrival. We don't anticipate not having the proper PPE in hand when schools start.
Yeah, is this mask store students actually have to go pick them up? It says available. There's some times there.
Is that the one they bought from the football team?
No, face shields, I, I guess the county donated face shields. There, there's a times here for, I guess, pickup times? Zach or Dr. Harner?
Let me answer, Dr. Harner.
Go ahead.
It, it's when we have to pick it up from the county, that's all. This is, uh, uh, something the facilities department and, and the business department have put together and are working on. So it's not, it has nothing to do with like delivery to buildings. It's when are we actually gonna receive it and take it into our inventory? We're hoping to have everything early next week and then, uh, start to put everything together per building and deliver it to the building principal and secretary to then, you know, work on, uh, plans for distributing to staff and, and students and setting things up in their buildings.
And is there gonna be one for every staff member and student?
Uh, one what? Face shield?
Yeah.
Uh, we, yeah, the county is supposed, supposedly has enough that they're donating for, for everyone. Uh, we, we hedged our bets a little bit, and we bought face shields for staff, um, just so we had then, uh, you know, that in our back pocket, but, but everything, the only thing that, uh, you'll notice on there that's probably the biggest concern is the, uh, hand sanitizer dispensers, but we have a plan B for that for the short term.
All right. I'm gonna move on to new businesses. Are there any new board business?
Yeah, it's Keith. I'd just like to make a motion, uh, to, um, increase the substitute nurse salary from 20 to $25 for this year.
I'll second that motion.
I'm sorry, Keith, can you repeat? I couldn't hear it. You, you broke up. I just made a motion to increase the substitute or per diem nurses, uh, registered nurse salary from 20 to $25 an hour. Thank you.
Discussion?
Yeah, this was done. Go ahead.
Oh, no, why don't you go ahead? You can give the background, go ahead.
Yeah, again, if you, you heard the, the talk earlier, this is done because we're experiencing a shortage of nurses, and we need to make it more attractive for sub nurses to come into our schools and help us out. And, uh, the daily rate needs to be increased a little, and that's really what we're shooting for. We have a backup plan, as you heard, we just approved, uh, allowing the administration to investigate services to provide subs when subs are not available. Uh, but we're hoping to, uh, keep the subs we have and to attract some others without going through a third party. That's why we're making this change. It was discussed in the finance committee earlier.
Um, I guess my, my question, my follow-up question was, you know, what is the going rate for a sub in other surrounding districts? And, you know, all in all, I guess that really doesn't matter, because it's all supply and demand at this juncture.
I agree with you, Dave.
Yep. And this isn't gonna like, you know, we, we, we talk to other districts about our substitute rate for teachers, and we try and keep the gentleman's agreements that we have, so to speak, or cordial agreements, we'll call it.
This was my idea.
Anything like this?
This, this was an idea that we, we discussed next, then, like collusion, there's none, but I, uh, I think that, um, you know, when, when you look at trying to attract, I mean, would, if we have to go to that, that third party like we spoke about earlier, uh, it could be substantially higher cost, David. So I was, you know, at $65 an hour relative, currently we're paying 20. Um, I thought if you increase it, you may be able to attract a couple people per diem, um, to help, you know, alleviate the need to go outside to a, a staffing agency.
So my immediate concern is, well, what about our current nurses and the amount of money that they get paid? You know, in relation to when now we're gonna pay a substitute, you know, we should really talk about what that rate is, in a sense.
We're making more than $25 an hour. They're making more than.
Yeah, that was discussed.
And, um, I think the other part to this is to understand it's, it's not atypical to have somebody, you know, we were not, we're not paying benefits and, uh, you know, health insurance and things along those lines that, that are all total in costs that you, you have to factor in when you're, when you're looking at full-time employees versus per diem, and so.
Yeah, David, that, that number was chosen with all the other knowledge. You're, you're, you're questioning, you know, Zach and Keith went through it all, and that was a targeted number.
Thank you. I, I was a little late to that call. I do apologize.
Oh, it was a good question.
All right, I guess we'll go ahead and vote. Is, is there any other comments? All right, all those in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries unanimously, and we're down to our final public comment. Did we receive any new public comments?
Actually, Kaylin, I had a.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Any more new board business?
I just had a question, and, and I don't know if it's Dr. Harner that would be appropriate for this or, or somebody else, but, uh, can you give us a general idea of when, uh, teacher assignments and class assignments are going to be coming out? Is it gonna be this week, or tomorrow, early next week, late next week? You know, can we have an idea? Because there's a lot of people that are asking about that.
Sir, it maybe it's my computer, but I didn't get that whole question.
Uh, I said, so there's a lot of people that have been asking about, um, their students, their, their child's class assignment and who their teacher would be. Is there a, a way to kind of predict roughly when that could, when those things could happen?
The A and B letters went out yesterday. I would imagine at beginning of next week, middle of next week, they'd have the, the follow-on information for you all.
As far as like who the teacher is and all that?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
And I, I have one more new business. Um, we do not have another board meeting scheduled before, uh, our, scheduled changeover from our, our four-week virtual period to our regular period. So I am assuming that, that, that if we don't schedule another meeting, that change is going to happen automatically. Dr. Harner?
I'm confused, Chris. Don't we have one on the 28th or something?
24th.
24th, so when the four weeks be, what, October 14th-ish?
Our actual, the next scheduled board meeting after school starts is, is six weeks later.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's, we don't, wouldn't have a meeting until after that apparent changeover would, would happen, that, that first four-week grace period that we're.
We have one the 24th. Yeah.
I'm trying to find it. I, maybe there are schedule here in board docs is not updated.
No, it's, it's correct. There is a board meeting on September 24th. There is a board meeting on.
And we're talking about.
September 24th, and there is a board meeting on October 22nd. Those are the next two board meetings after this evening that is our scheduled.
Okay, it, for some reason, they're not showing up on my board docs here, but, okay.
Well, the October 22nd, to your point, is not four weeks.
So we still should probably.
Because I, I think I brought this up in an email, like, and it was an, oh, by the way, is this gonna just automatically happen?
We could take a look at adding a meeting or even just, um, since we don't have another one, another actual meeting until September 24th, we could also look at an additional meeting strictly for the evaluation of the four weeks, and so I can talk to Dr. Harner about that.
Thank you.
Presume that it has to be a public meeting?
It would be a public meeting.
And if we did not schedule that meeting, that changeover is set to happen regardless, correct?
I don't, I don't think so. I think it has to be a board-level decision.
We already made the decision. We said that we're gonna go four weeks.
And evaluate it.
Okay.
Yeah.
But we have to evaluate where we are, Chris, and see.
Yeah.
You know, we, we don't wanna be the University of Alabama and have 520 COVID cases the first.
Oh, my gosh, is that right?
Yeah.
I believe the way it was phrased was that we, that we'll go for four weeks and be evaluated at each upcoming board meeting.
Correct.
Yeah, we need to. Have a board meeting, would it just change over? Because we don't have one currently scheduled.
We do, we have one on the 24th.
So we need to have one.
We can have one in between. I'll, I'll work on that, guys.
Even if it's just an hour.
Yep.
Oh, you mean in the beginning of October?
Yeah.
Yeah, four weeks after school starts, yeah.
Well, why don't we, uh, why don't we, uh, see what happens on the 24th? Ah, whatever.
True.
On there.
True.
What the hell? We just keep, we just keep scheduling meetings. Let's see, keep going.
It's your favorite thing, Keith.
It is. It's because we like each other so much, Keith. What, what a better use of your evenings.
I got it. I'm with you. I'm sorry.
We will evaluate it.
I missed y'all.
You're enjoying this? You're crazy person, Steve. Crazy.
Still think that.
Tentatively, the eighth, we might have a meeting, I think, is the feeling I'm getting from the way this is going.
Yeah, it sounds like it.
Potentially, I would say.
I think that's a good idea, a short meeting after the four-week period.
So put one on the books, and then if we wanna cancel, cancel.
Okay, I'll work on it.
Do, Kaylin, I will wait for your nod as far as whether or not, because it'll cost us, I mean, I don't wanna just schedule it and cancel it, because it does cost us money to advertise it, so I'll wait for your direction.
Okay, sounds good. All right, so, um, any other new business? All right, we're gonna move to the calendar items.
You wanna go public comment? You had mentioned.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, did we get any public comments?
Yes, there is one more public comment, and it is from Michelle Fronheiser of Milford Township. Um, she has a hybrid or virtual question, and she's asking, um, can you be more specific with what virtual days of hybrid will be like? Would two of these three days be synchronous? For example, group A attends in-person Monday and Tuesday. Group B is live remotely with their classroom at the same time. Wednesday is asynchronous. Group B is in-person Thursday and Friday, while group A is live remotely with their classroom.
Sounds about right. Am I missing anything on that, admin?
Well, that sounds to me like she's asking if we're gonna be doing more synchronous than my understanding.
I think that the secret, what we're recommending to teachers is that they, but we're not requiring it, is that they provide live synchronous opportunities for their students.
It sounded like that question was asking if the whole instructional day in the virtual world would be synchronous. And I don't believe that's the case. Is that right, Dr. Harner?
That is, I, that is correct, Brian.
Is, is it possible that we could possibly have these, a, a town hall meeting before the start of school? Like you did before, one for the secondary and one for the elementaries, really going over this, uh, hybrid model or virtual model for, for the parents? Dr. Harner?
I, I would like to delegate that down to the building principal. They're, they have all kinds of meetings scheduled, and I, I don't think that that would be beneficial at the district level, because you're gonna have building-specific questions. And the, and the principals are already doing those things. Like Scott did one last night, just on a, it's Scott Gutschall at Nighting, just did one last night or the night before from, from Nighting Elementary School, so they could get an idea what schools like. But they're having their opening meetings themselves.
Yeah, and just make sure you, you know, you put stuff in the FAQs and make it really clear and use visuals and, yeah.
I think our FAQs are eighty pages long now.
Well, that's not, that's nothing to brag about if it's hard to find something.
Yeah, that, that's.
Control F, people. Control or Command F, search function.
Yeah, so, yeah, just think of the customer and try to make things real clear and easy, so these questions can be self-served and answered.
I agree.
Except by all of us.
All right. So. It's going to be there really soon. September 3rd is the facilities committee meeting.
We are home.
That's true. Fair point. September 10th is a policy committee meeting. We have a finance committee, a regular board meeting, a voting meeting and an education and curriculum. Meeting September 24th. So at this point, I would just need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I got it.
Second.
Discussion.
You jumped on that real quick, Chris. Keith, Keith.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, motion carries and thank you all for attending and being with us.
Two 10, Keith.
I want to.
Then that's all it was.
I want to thank all the teachers and administrators for all their patience these last few weeks. It doesn't go without noticing. Thank you all so much.
And especially your hard work that they put in and they will be putting in, yes.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.